Hey everybody, how's it going? Hope you're having a lovely day. So today I got to sit down with city councilman Mike Siegel and we had a great conversation for an hour. I, we had a phone call conversation before this. His assistant had reached out to me and gave me his direct cellphone number. And I called and instead of feeding me some standard, you know, um, copy pasta lobbyist bullshit, he actually had a real half hour conversation that sounded like talking to a normal human being. So I wanted to share that with all of you. I asked if he was open to doing an interview and he said, yes. I said, what if we do it live? And he's like, absolutely. He doesn't care. I'm not used to that from politicians. Usually if I ask a politician, do you want to do a live stream video interview? There's going to be conditions stipulations. Can I see what you want to talk about ahead of time? None of that from him. So I really appreciated that. And if he didn't know the answer to something, he just said, yeah, I don't know. I wish I knew that, but I don't know. Instead of just making something up. So I have a lot of respect for him for this, regardless of even if we have small disagreements in some areas you see by the end of the interview. On the issue of AI surveillance, he and I are essentially one and one. We completely agree on the fact that taxpayer dollars should not be going to surveil you all the time. I'm going to play you the full unedited interview. The TLDR is he is a former civil rights attorney who wants to get all of this AI surveillance pushed out of not just Austin, but he wants to set an example for the rest of the country to follow. Ideally, you would have some sort of privacy legislation at the federal level or at least the state level. But until we have that, putting, coming up with a rubric that other cities can follow is something that would be great. And as he's said proudly, and I think he should say proudly, Austin is the largest city in America to have no Flock surveillance cameras in it at all, which is, uh, which is great. He wants to create a privacy policy that would make it more difficult for AI surveillance companies to come into the city and do things that they shouldn't. He has a lot of pointed comments about how these companies operate. He's a bulldog against AI surveillance in your city. So Kenzie was there as well and had some good questions. I am, uh, I'm afraid to introduce her because I'm afraid to give her microphones at this point. Can I be honest? I've, I have like every time she shows up on video, one of my microphones dies. Like this worked and then it died last time I gave it to her. This is a micro, this is my first DPA 4065. I have been using this since 2014 and it died this morning. Thank you, Mike Siegel for taking the time. Thank you for giving me honest answers and thank you for just being an approachable human being. I think that the audience is really going to appreciate that. Hey everybody, how's it going? Hope you're having a lovely day. Today we're here with councilman Mike Siegel. Thank you very much for taking the time, my friend.
Yeah, great to have you here.
So it was a pleasure to have you reach out to me to discuss this entire AI surveillance thing. I really appreciate the phone call that we had and I thought it would be great to share some of this and let you flesh out your ideas for everybody who's listening.
Sounds good.
So I guess my first question for you is you were a civil rights attorney before becoming a city councilman. So you can, can you talk a little bit about the journey that you took from the work you were doing before to what you're doing now?
Sure. Um, so yeah, I've been an attorney, um, I guess since 2010. Civil rights context, I mean, a lot of my cases are more employment related, you know, discrimination, unjust termination, things of that nature. But I have gotten involved in, um, you know, representing people who were arrested for doing civil disobedience. I've been involved with challenges to surveillance programs. And so definitely have, um, you know, a close ear to the ground in terms of encroachments on our civil rights and, uh, thinking in structural ways about how to push back against government overreach and really authoritarianism. And so, um, you know, my story to city council involves, uh, I practiced law in California, moved to Texas. I was a city attorney in Austin for a while, uh, got involved with some very high profile political cases for the city that kind of put me on the map politically and led for me running for office. And ultimately, um, because of my background as a city attorney and my understanding of the bureaucracy of the city of Austin, as well as my community organizing experience with unions and grassroots groups, uh, I decided to run for city council and was ultimately successful. Have only been here since January. So, um, can't take credit or responsibility for the things the council did last year and before, but, uh, trying to do the most I can now that I'm here.
Yeah, I noticed you've been here for about 10 months. So with the, uh, to like toss everything out to you would be very, very unfair. So you had talked about on the phone with me, creating a privacy policy for the city of Austin, for any of these types of AI surveillance initiatives. And I wanted to know, where did this idea come from and how do you envision that being fleshed out?
Sure. I think we have to go back to the fight against, uh, you know, the ALPR program in the city. I mean, that's really where it crystallized for me that this was an issue where action was needed. And so, you know, just going back to earlier this year, uh, in approximately February, uh, city council had a vote on whether to quote unquote, extend the pilot period for the automated license plate reader program. And that was where my office started getting involved. Um, I knew that ALPRs were a very dangerous tool that, uh, involved a lot of surveillance and encroachment on people's civil liberties. I knew that the city had already gotten rid of ALPRs, but then brought them back. And so when I heard that there was a pilot program and that the council had the option of discontinuing it, I started to organize and my chief of staff, who's also a civil rights lawyer, she and I kind of put together a strategy. And so originally we were only able to get three votes against continuation of the contract in February. But we had some people coming to council and raising, you know, bigger picture concerns that this isn't just a simple tool that captures license plate numbers to help us, you know, um, you know, recover stolen cars, that there are bigger picture concerns. And so, um, after council voted to complete the pilot program, um, we came back in June for a big decision. And so this is when we had grassroots groups like Electronic Frontier Foundation, uh, folks who are concerned about our immigrant community, folks who are concerned about police overreach, had a number of people testify about the dangers of ALPRs. And that's where my office did a lot of research to look into the exact way that Austin, uh, came to a contract with both Flock and Axon, the two ALPR providers. And what we learned is that the prior council had gone to extraordinary efforts to create, uh, guardrails, you know, protections against misuse of this technology. And that actually the city council had adopted a policy that was probably leading the country in terms of the amount of protections and constraints on how the ALPR technology would be used. But to kind of cut to the chase, it turned out that despite the council policy of the police department and the other city departments hadn't respected those guidelines in the implementation. And so a big one was you were only supposed to be able to use the LPR for certain types of searches. And the police manual was supposed to, um, specifically instruct officers on how to do that. So they were able to look for stolen cars. They were able to look, uh, for a certain number of criminal offenses. But other than that, they weren't supposed to use the tool. They weren't supposed to share the data with outside agencies. And there was supposed to be basically, um, a very limited detention period, uh, retention period for how long the data would stay available. But it turned out the police department had executed a contract with Flock in particular that basically overrode all of these policies and gave Flock, uh, an unlimited license to use the data acquired from surveilling Austinites, you know? I forgot the exact number. I could find it here, but basically millions of scans of license plates, right? And that even the searches, the tens of thousands of searches that the police department had done, um, over 20,000 were not compliant with, with the policy. The, the police officers were putting random, uh, information to justify the search. They weren't using one of the specific offenses that they were allowed to search for.
So can you tell me a little bit, I had two questions there. The first is when you say offenses they're allowed to search for, what was this, what were the policy guardrails with regards to what you're searching for? And more importantly, how does this relate to what was going on in Houston? Because I remember in Houston, there were people that were searching for things, they were typing in donut. And sometimes they were just typing in ASDF. So you would just have ASDF and that's it. And that's something that seems like a serious violation. Like donut, uh, like it's not even like you're saying, I use this to try and solve a crime and I didn't actually see that crime or I'm just going to make up a crime that doesn't exist or pretend. You're not even pretending at that point. You know, it's a joke.
If I remember from the audit that Austin did, 25% of our queries were just had, were blank, right?
Right. Or, or gibberish. Right. And so there was supposed to be an internal mechanism where the police department was self auditing. And that, that internal mechanism fell apart. Um, and so, so the, I was trying to finish the story, but long story short, we found out that the city guardrails failed and that we couldn't trust either the vendor or the city departments frankly, to make sure that Austinites privacy was protected. In terms of Houston, you know, that didn't come across my plate as like, uh, a part of the conversation we were having. Obviously Houston's had its own issues with police overreach. But I think the, the national conversation about how Flock was collaborating, for example, with Palantir, um, you know, being co-owned by this gentleman Peter, Peter Thiel, right? And how at the federal level, they're creating a database on every American. And then at the local level, they're entering into contracts where they acquire, uh, data regarding our movements around the community. And that was obviously a big concern.
So what were the type of guardrails that were in that type of policy? And I apologize, I didn't mean to cut you off. I was just.
No, uh, no, it's fine. No, there's a lot to get into here. Um, so I've got them in front of me. So the data was only to be used for stolen vehicles and the specific list of offenses, you know, um, very serious crimes. There was to be no outside sharing, no sharing with outside agencies unless that agency, uh, basically completed an MOU, agreeing to abide by our guardrails. Uh, there was to be no data sharing with private companies. There's be specific training for the police officers on how to use it. The, the vendor was only supposed to keep our data for seven days and there was going to be an audit at the conclusion of, of one year. And so just to give you one example of a failure, the retention period was a joke, right? Because Flock said, we only retain this data for seven days, but that a separate provision of the contract said, well, we can feed all the data into our machine learning, artificial intelligence program. And so do machines ever forget? So like, what is the purpose of a seven day retention period if the AI can access all the data on the front end? And so that was just one example of a lot of failures.
So how would this type of privacy policy work if I'm a police officer in Houston? And I say, I, and I type in ASDF donut. Let's say that I'm an Austin police officer and I typed that in for the, to use a Flock system or a LiveView system or any of that type of system. How would this type of privacy policy affect that situation?
Well, in practice, it would have done nothing because basically, uh, council, you know, as a legislative body, basically told the police department, create internal regulations in accord with our policy. But in practice, officers were able to log into the system and, you know, maybe follow their X, uh, through the camera system or, or undergo, undertake any search that they wanted to without any sort of immediate accountability. It was only later after the audit process occurred that we realized these 20,000 plus improper searches were done.
Yeah. And then, um, what was very surprising to me is I was there when, um, y'all were debating this Flock contract. What was extremely surprising to me is that a lot of city council members didn't have access to the contract language themselves, which was extremely surprising to me because we kept emailing and we kept saying like, of course you have the contract, right? You're voting on it. So of course you read the contract. And I was super shocked to learn that not just Austin, but it's, it's not uncommon for cities across the US to not look at these third party vendor contracts. So I was super interested to hear about the policy that you proposed for Austin to sort of give us more transparency. Can you tell me about that?
Sure. Yeah. I mean, the only reason we even dug into the contract is because the prior council had done this audit. And the auditor flagged that there was a, you know, disconnect between the guidelines and the contract. And so then we were able to dig it up. Um, but yeah, in terms of a future policy, we're looking at uh, a few communities that have stronger privacy policies, you know, Seattle being one and Santa Clara county in Silicon Valley being another. And so, um, you know, there, there's standard contract provisions. So that's part of what we would do is create a form contract, uh, that deals with any sort of technology that, that encompasses surveillance. And so they would have strict limitations on how the data is used, uh, limitations on who can access the data, procedures for training, uh, data anonymization requirements, uh, protections against re-identification of the data and robust audit provisions. So there'd be kind of a standard contract that would be attached to the privacy policy. But then the, the interesting thing is that before any item came up for vote, uh, city staff, uh, would have to prepare an impact report. And so, you know, the concern is that the surveillance technology impacts civil liberties, but we would have staff prepare a report before we even voted that says, what exactly does the technology do? Uh, what data does it collect and what are the potential risks and benefits? And this is something, you know, um, we'll talk a little bit about the Parks contract, I'm sure, this LiveView. But you know, what we learned about the, the Austin Parks Department, which had paid for this vendor to place these devices in parking lots, right? And the motivation for these devices was that a lot of times when Austin folks go for a hike in the green belt or go up to Mount Benel to climb up the hill, uh, their car gets broken into, right? And something gets stolen. And so the, you know, the residents are saying, hey, do something about these break-ins. So the park department was like, oh yeah, we'll get some cameras, some monitors. The Parks Department wasn't even aware that the company providing these cameras and monitors was using AI technology. Was basically capturing and monetizing all of the underlying data.
So this sounds like one of those situations where I have a job at, like, let's say I want to hire somebody to just add a page to my website. And then like my assistant goes, okay, what is your website? It's WordPress. And then she asks the tech person, what is WordPress and PHP? And then she goes to LinkedIn and goes like, I need a PHP program. It's eight years experience. And I mean, I just wanted somebody to contribute to my blog. So it sounds like one of those kind of comedies of errors where you have multiple departments working together to try to get something done. One of the questions that I had on here for later, but it was centrally, uh, like my business, since we do data recovery, a lot of the times we only have one chance to actually fix something. We can't just buy the new one if it breaks. So we try to save the more drastic measures for last, if there's a sort of problem. So what has Austin done? And I know you've only been here for eight, eight or 10 months. So you can't give every answer from you. But what has Austin done to try and address the break-ins and cars in the parks prior to looking for contracts with companies like LiveView Technologies?
Yeah. I mean, I think generally speaking, um, I mean, the main thrust of the city, uh, prior to me getting here has been to hire more police officers. Right? Um, you know, I think from the police chief's point of view, there aren't enough police officers on patrol, right? And so we don't have an officer in a vehicle sitting outside the Mount Benel hiking spot or the green, uh, belt hiking spot. And frankly, if there's a property crime and you call, the, the officers are not going to respond because they have more serious crimes to, to work on. And so I think that other than that, I think the next step was to acquire cameras. And, you know, going to your point about, you know, comedy of errors, I think that's part of it. Lack of sophistication by a Parks Department executive to pick the right vendor. But part of it is the vendor themselves, and this is LiveView, uh, was able to achieve a cost advantage. So they were able to submit a lower bid because they were monetizing people's private data, right? Because they, their, their profit isn't from selling the camera or leasing the camera equipment. It's from what do they do with that data set they acquire?
Can you say that again, for anybody who missed that?
Sure. That, um, LiveView, which was one of the bidders on this procurement contract for the Parks Department to put cameras in parking lots, they were able to outbid their competitors because they could essentially lose money or take less income on the camera equipment. Because the data set they were acquiring from having these facilities and parking lots across the city, they were able to separately monetize that data for their own.
What, uh, where did you get this from? Was this part of the contract? Was this something that they had spoken to you? Or is this experience from others? I'm just, I believe you, but I'm very curious.
No, this is my inference. I'll say that. I mean, this is, you know, this Flock, uh, surveillance technology. You know, this is big business. I mean, this is what we learned from social media, right? Why is Facebook so valuable? Why is TikTok so valuable? It's because, you know, they provide a free service. We can just log in and have an account. But they acquire all this data about our preferences, about our movements, and that's valuable in and of itself.
Interesting. Oh, so, so you're saying you inferred that that was how they were able to get the lowest bid, not that the, that was in the contract?
Correct.
Okay. Cause I mean, that, that's one of the things that the reason I was like jumped in at that point is that's one of the things that I would assume, but I would like, I, it's one of those things I have in the back of my head. Like, you know, when you use Facebook and you start seeing ads for something. I don't have proof that they're listening and then using it for ads, but I would kind of believe it, but I'd wanna, I would be curious for.
I mean, I have a couple of notes here I could share. I mean, one is that, um, the Parks Department wasn't even aware that this technology had AI capacity. But on LiveView's website, they advertise these tower mounted cameras with an AI that without any human intervention at all decides who looks suspicious based on, I guess, what they call agentic AI, right? And so we, we know that these AI technologies are acquiring massive data sets for further monetization, right? That's just a true, truth statement across the economy, right?
I just want to point out that in March, I believe Flock was, uh, valued at 7.5 billion. There are plenty of other camera companies that have existed for a long time, right? And none of them raised this amount of money. It, it seems like a reasonable inference to me that off the back particularly of these AI companies receiving more and more and more investment that Flock Safety and therefore LiveView were sort of trying to enter the same space where they, um, create these AI programs and this mass amount of data. It seems odd that they would be able to raise so much money, um, simply off of camera safety and, uh, or cameras that purportedly promote public safety.
That's right.
So there was a part of LiveView's website where they said, uh, they told me that we don't do facial recognition. And I'm really happy that I had that conversation with them ahead of time. And then I just look in the website, I do three clicks and it says, how LiveView helps. Not like general, we put this for SEO, how LiveView helps and machine learning enables facial recognition. So if a company were to lie during the procurement process with a privacy policy that you have in place, what would be the consequences of that? Or has that been like put in there and or thought through?
No, that's, that's a key point, right? Like, uh, obviously you want to be able to end the contract, but can you get punitive damages or, or some sort of, um, you know, deterrent award that would, would penalize the company and prevent them from doing this in the future?
Because they have, uh, I mean, they have all these companies that, you know, Scott Galloway, he wrote this excellent book on breaking up Microsoft, Amazon, Google, Facebook. And one of the things he says is, I never speak with any of the communications people from any of these companies. Not because they're mean or I hate them, but because they have them so much money, they can hire the most likable person that you would have to be insane to dislike this person. So they'll show up to your office and you'll think, ah, you know, like maybe we don't really need to regulate. They'll, they'll figure, Sheryl Sandberg will figure it out, like the Instagram algorithm, uh, and how it works. If there's, you'll not want to, you'll, you'll just say, okay, fine. I'll deal with it. And these, what I've noticed when speaking to anybody, not just Matt, but from any of these businesses is they are so charming that I like, once I get off the phone, I just have to smack myself and go, wait a second, I don't want this to be said. But they're very good at it and they're, and they're going to say what they need to say to get the contract. So I'm curious, what do you think consequences should be either before procurement or after procurement? If something like that happens where they say, we don't do X and I click on your website and it says, you do X.
Right. I mean, frankly, it's a crime, right? It's, it should be a penal offense to acquire, acquire data under false pretenses, right? It's, it's a theft, uh, and it's a fraud. Ultimately, we do need higher level regulation from the federal government ideally, right? They would create some sort of set of consequences, but we're not going to hold our breath. And so we have to be as careful as possible on the front end. And that was kind of a rallying cry, uh, when the community came out to speak against this, that the only safe data is data that's never created in the first place.
Yeah. And we're dealing with this with the right to repair stuff for cars right now where the Rev Up America, which is a front for a bunch of auto, or you know, automakers is saying that, you know, you were handing the keys over to North Korea and Iran and China. But if you let independence fix your car, they said, your car is essentially all of your data on wheels. It's a computer on wheels with all of your data. And the number one question that always shows up is why is my car collecting everything on me again?
Yeah.
So this brings me to a question you had. You were talking about federally and I know that I'm not talking about the federal level, but I know that Texas banned red light cameras statewide in 2019 with a House bill 1631. Would you support any sort of state legislation that limits what municipal governments can do with regards to AI surveillance of citizens?
Absolutely. Uh, we really need that. Now, whether we could get that through the current legislature, that's another question, right? And this is where we need the community to kind of wake up and demand this kind of policy.
I forget the name of the senator. It's on the tip of my tongue. It was, uh, Bob Hall that proposed this before it became a House bill in 2019. And it was incredibly bipartisan and it had a lot of support because who wants to deal with red light cameras? I mean, in where I live, you have red light cameras and people will smash on their brakes and cause a fender bender because they don't want to get a $300 ticket, which causes quite a lot more crashes than what you would have otherwise. But I'm curious if there's, uh, if there's really support out there, at the very least at the state level. Because I've noticed this trend where Texas state government, when it does pass legislation, it's often limiting what local governments can do. And it would be interesting to see a piece of legislation that limits, uh, how a city can spend their budget surveilling their citizens, particularly if they didn't consent to it.
I think, for example, fighting these ALPRs is becoming an extremely popular issue for the community. I mean, um, after Austin, you know, ended our program, we've seen the city of Lockhart end their program. And just earlier today, Hayes County, which is just south of Austin, voted to end their program. And so I think when the average person learns that, that these cameras are creating profiles of everywhere we move throughout the day and that profile can be sold to private vendors as well as law enforcement agencies, I think people don't want this. And so there's just some serious public education to do.
Interesting. Yeah. And one of the interesting things is when we, we went to Vitor, Texas, because I, I put out to my audience, the next person that wants to show up at one of these hearings, I'll help you. We can talk, we can prepare your testimony and let's record it and get more people excited about it. It was in Vitor, Texas. And the, one thing I found interesting, there's just the sort of bipartisan nature of this is there was this one woman talking about socialism in Bolivia and what it was like to live there under socialism and surveillance. And then as that was occurring, the Democratic Socialists of America are doing a webinar on why ALPR suck. And it was simulcast at the exact, like they were both showing up at 7:30. So you could only watch one or the other. And it just showed the, the nature of this, which is that you'd be surprised how many people from all across the aisle think, I really don't want to spend millions of dollars to go watch it all the time.
Yeah. Well, if you think about it, freedom is a bipartisan issue. And this is just fundamental, right? The idea of some device or some company tracking our movements, knowing everything we do. I mean, we're becoming acculturated to it, right? I mean, all of us carry around these cell phones that do track our movements. But I think this is just another example. It's a bridge too far for a lot of people.
So this is something where I'm kind of, I'm confused as to how this could be addressed with a privacy policy, but I feel like your heart's in the right place with it, which is, uh, I know that they say that they store their data, they store anonymized movement data. That's what Flock standard terms call it. They say claim it's anonymized movement data. But that's, that is stored indefinitely. But MIT research shows that that data can be re-identified 95% of the time. So how does your policy address vendor retention after contracts end? Particularly when that's being used to train an AI model, which is going to, which doesn't have the concept of forgetting.
Yeah. No, I mean, I, I tend to think that Flock is irredeemable in this space. I mean, they've made so many mistakes or intentional or otherwise, right? So many infringements of people's fundamental liberties that I don't think they can be trusted as a company. Ultimately, I mean, I, this is me just brainstorming, um, the data set would have to be kept local, right? It couldn't be in the cloud. Because yes, once you transfer the data to the private company, what's going to really stop them?
And this is, this has been, uh, my project elsewhere, which is going over how everything that you buy, you don't own things anymore. Everything's a subscription. Everything has to connect to somebody else's server in order to work. So if there were to be that type of initiative with a privacy policy or a policy that you want to put in place, be one where that, that data has to be owned by the city. With, with LiveView, they were saying, our clients own the data. And I asked, where is it hosted on our server? And it's like, I mean, my audience knows where I'm going with this. You, you can't, you're lucky. You can even access your washing machine when it connects to the internet nowadays. Every, every day there's a new article that we put up on a new product or a new service that has been turned off or disabled for people because it has to connect to somebody else's server. So would you want the, this type of, this type of stuff to be hosted locally?
Absolutely. I mean, what do they say? Possession is nine tenths of the law. And so if you don't possess the data, how can you control it and make sure it's safeguarded?
Interesting.
I'd like to ask, um, part of the issue is that like federal subpoenas can come in and collect this data too, right? Part of it is definitely Flock and in general, third party vendors having access to this because they have their own privacy policies and their own contracts and their own initiatives for selling this data. But how would you protect it at a local level from say, like Flock was collaborating with ICE, from ICE coming in and saying, we want all of this data to use?
I think that's where we just have to keep less data. I mean, cause fundamentally, you know, the city is a creature of the state, right? The city doesn't have this independent authority separate from Texas. And so Texas has already passed a law that says, we have to cooperate with immigration authorities. And so that is written in the law. And so we just have to work with that. And to me, that means we don't want to create data that ICE can capture. And so I think, you know, I guess it's the New Hampshire model, only storing the data for a couple of minutes, you know, things along those lines. Where you can do maybe a quick search for a, a vehicle. I mean, to give you an example, we recently had a shooting in Austin at the Target where three people were killed. And after that shooting, the police chief came to me and said, oh, we would have caught that person faster if we had ALPRs. And instead we had to launch a helicopter and do a longer search. And so I guess the thing is to try to, um, you know, accommodate to some extent the police department's concerns, you know, putting public safety forward. And they say, and we can take it in good faith, that we're not trying to create a data set for ICE or private vendors. And so to try to work within those parameters, okay, can the data be kept for a few minutes? So you can do your quick search and then the data is, you know, erased.
So a federal judge recently found that Norfolk's Flock network plausibly violates the Fourth Amendment. So as a civil rights attorney, can you explain the legal landscape around this technology and where that case is going?
Sure. I haven't read the case. Um, but you know, if you're thinking about a Fourth Amendment, we're taking, we're thinking about the protections against unreasonable search and seizure, right? So to be arrested, there has to be probable cause, right? Specific articulable facts that you committed a crime. And then even for the so-called stop and frisk, you know, um, there needs to be a reasonable suspicion that again, that's based on evidence, right? Specific facts. And these by contrast are dragnet's without any reasonable suspicion, much less probable cause. They are, uh, doing a search, right? They are tracking our movements. They are, um, doing what we would perceive to be unreasonable, right? Which is following us throughout our movements in the course of a day. Now Flock in their policy says that we're doing all this in public. Our cars are on public roads, so there's no expectation of privacy. And to me, that's a very insidious argument because our whole legal framework is pre-computers, pre, you know, big tech. And so these legal rules were developed on the basis of someone visually observing something, not being continuously observed throughout your movements throughout a city or, or state. And so unfortunately, our legal landscape is, is somewhat, um, you know, not up to the task to really protect us in this environment. But, um, but, but the core of, I bet that, that Virginia ruling is that there's no facts that justify either a, a quick search or, you know, a seizure.
Yeah. I mean, it was not even pre-technology. It's like pre-car.
Right.
The best way you could follow somebody was with a horse. So let's say that now I've been talking about stuff at the public level, but let's say at the private level. There's a limit to what you can say a private business can't do on their own property. And most certainly even I have an AI camera at my house. It's this open source program called Frigget, but it'll tell me the difference between a human, a fox, a cat, a dog. And it's, it's kind of cool. I don't use it to stalk people. But there, the concern is that is with all these private businesses, hello, it's Home Depot and everybody else, having Flock cameras and AI surveillance cameras that police can instantly tap into. So how would you address that with either a privacy policy or legislatively? If every private business were to, let's say, have one of these types of cameras and they were all something that could be tapped into easily. Cause people will say, well, you have a camera system as well, right, Louis? And so you're a hypocrite. But CCTV, the first C is closed. It's a closed circuit, which means you have to knock on my door. You have to have somebody there who knows the path. It's a closed circuit, which means you have to knock on my door, you have to have somebody there who knows the passwords to the system. I have to give you a USB drive, you have to import it. It's different than just logging in and being able to see 1,000 people's cameras and just using a little chat GPT-like prompt to say, find me somebody who looks like this. How would you address the fact that even if these are not implemented at the city level, that private businesses are going to install them at their leisure and provide that in an easy manner to the police? Like, for instance, with Ring doorbells. Ring provides information and Ring provides footage to the police without a warrant. Everybody has a Ring doorbell and they do that without the permission of the owner of the house. So even if there is no public cameras installed, if everybody has a Ring doorbell, you essentially have surveillance of that area via a private network without the actual owner of the product even knowing. So how would you address that?
No, absolutely. Well, I mean, at first, I'm just trying to take care of my own house here, my house being the city of Austin, and making sure we're not violating people's rights and we're not putting people at risk by entering into reckless contracts. So that's kind of step one. The bigger picture, I'm not sure the city has authority to regulate the private businesses. I think this is where the state or federal action would be needed. You know, like, how do we, you know, tear down the Panopticon, right? The all-seeing, you know, computer, right? And it's almost like science fiction has come to life. I mean, I think I'm a little older than you, I don't know if you read Fahrenheit 451 when you were in school, but the idea that you're being followed at every step by a different camera is real. And frankly, London pioneered this years ago, right? The way they have got their whole CCTV network. And so it's going to take a national movement to really address this question. But I think we just have to get wins at each step, right? Let's stop the LiveView contract, let's stop the NextFlock contract, let's develop a comprehensive city policy. And then I think my role in this movement could be to share information with other city leaders, right? Okay, Houston, San Antonio, Santa Fe, you know, Phoenix, look what we're doing here. Do you think you want something similar there? So I can organize in my space. But I think that's where we need, you know, outside non-governmental organizations, we need public leaders to educate the public to build a broader movement.
Oftentimes, when people want change, they tend to look at the highest authority possible, right? They say, let's contact the president or let's get someone in the state legislature, without understanding both the importance of city politics and also the sheer amount of power they have in city politics. I always tell people, you know, some council members win by 0.1% or 500 people, and that's not uncommon. You know, if you and an organization got people together, you could really sway a vote and get people, people in the council who you really think are going to represent your interests. Can you tell me a bit about how important city politics is to state legislation?
Absolutely. And I only won by, what, 207 votes? So, and you know, some people give me credit for helping stop ALPRs in Austin. So elections do matter. You know, I think one thing to keep in mind is that cities are where a lot of people live. I mean, I don't know what the exact numbers are, if it's half our country or more live in cities. But you know, compared to the total land that we have in this country, most people live in a tiny proportion of that in the cities. And so that's where a lot of the people are, that's also where a lot of the businesses are. And also a lot of where the contracts for companies like Flock would be. And so we have a lot of leverage, both politically and economically, right? If a city like Austin develops a privacy policy that is popular, and we convince San Antonio, Dallas, Houston to follow, suddenly you've got a third of the state of Texas governed by popular privacy policies. And then all those state legislators and senators and US congresspeople who represent those areas, they know their constituents care about these issues. And it becomes much easier to carry these wins into different venues. Now that Austin got this win against Flock and Axon, it's easier for Lockhart and San Marcos and Hayes County to follow suit, right? Because we're kind of, we're expanding the Overton window, right? The view of what's possible. You know, Austin is the biggest city in the country to not have ALPRs. And that's why this conversation is so important because Flock and Axon and the rest of them, they want us to re-adopt ALPRs here. This is almost going to become a central, you know, point of struggle in this fight for privacy because they know that if Austin can stand against these policies, then we encourage others to follow suit.
This is a question that's come up a lot in the audience and I'm reading and chatting over and over, which is, with these being as unpopular as they are, what is the incentive structure and how do they continuously get pushed into the city? So for instance, in Denver, Colorado, the city council voted, I think, 12 to zero or 12 to one. By the way, large majority vote, saying, we don't want these. A bunch of people showed up to the hearing and said, we don't want these. And there's a provision that says that the mayor is allowed to do something without city council permission if it's less than $500,000. So they made their Flock contract $498,000. And I know what you're doing, that's not a coincidence, right? So across the country, when this occurs, what is the incentive structure there? Because obviously, the more paranoid people or the more pessimistic people in my audience, and I understand why they are that way, are going to think that there's just some envelope going under the table to everybody to get these installed. But what is the major incentive structure for these to be getting installed to the point where they're installed in spite of the lack of popularity among the citizens?
One thing I've really come to understand is how so much of government skews, at least local government, skews towards what do the police want? And there's a whole complex. So Austin, you know, city council, there's 11 of us, including the mayor, that vote on policy. But there's one person, the city manager, who oversees the 17,000 employees of the city. So that person's the CEO. We hire that person, but after we hire them, they do pretty much everything, right? Subject to our limitations. And if you ever participate in the search process for a city manager in Texas, one of the biggest factors is how that candidate interacts with the police, right? And so fundamentally, city government is skewed towards appeasing the police. And when a police chief says, this tool will help me solve crime, it's extremely hard for a politician to say no. And especially when that police chief's demand for a device like ALPRs is supported by the business groups. So while some of us were organizing against ALPRs, this group Opportunity Austin, which is like the big regional business association, was organizing for them. And so if you're a mayor, and I don't know the mayor of Denver, I don't really know anything about them, right? But what their calculation might be, oh, some constituents are mad right now, but I think they're going to quit after a while. But my career depends a lot more on this business association and these police leaders who could support me for reelection or running for Congress or what have you. And so there's a perception that the public has short-term memories that were not well organized, that will let people off the hook and there won't be accountability.
Interesting. So a lot of it comes from police and business groups?
I think so.
Yeah, because when I saw the number, the 498,000, and then I looked up, like, what is the legal limit for a mayor to spend money in Denver? And just raged at my screen, I don't know how else to explain it.
It's so cynical. I mean, you would hope they would recall the mayor or start a grassroots campaign, but of course, that's expensive and that takes a lot of work.
I can imagine. So if a contract like a LiveView contract were to reappear, in what form would it appear in front of the city council again? Like, if that were to be re-proposed?
Well, first of all, I've been assured that it's not coming back anytime soon and that we're going to have time to get this privacy policy in place before any similar contracts come back. There was the LiveView contract, there was an AI contract for homeless strategy that was going to use people's health data. And so we're, you know, we, and I mean, this office and others that are allied with us, we're trying to put a kibosh on all of this until we can get privacy guarantees in place.
That was curious for me because it was a homeless program and it was something along the lines of, we want to figure out who's at risk for becoming homeless. And there are people out there that may say, even if you're somebody who does not care about the homeless at all, well, if they're not homeless yet, that means that you're surveilling people that are not homeless in order to figure that out. And that's just something struck me as kind of strange about that.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding was this vendor Valkyrie was going to use people's economic data. I don't know if it was pay stubs or unemployment receipts, things of that nature.
Health data too, I believe. They were modeling it off of a program they had tried in California somewhat, I believe.
But the California program was run by a nonprofit, not a for-profit. And so it was definitely different in important ways.
I remember seeing it on the agenda and thinking, wow, that's not a lot of detail. They kind of just said, we're going to collect data and use it. But I think that's something your policy would try and solve, right? It would require a lot more transparency and sort of like a boilerplate attachment to any contract that City of Austin made with third-party vendors to ensure that they're adhering to like certain data standards, et cetera. If it's okay, I want to go into more of what that policy could look like because I think a lot of other cities, like you were saying, cities that are as big as Austin tend to influence a lot of other cities. And you were referencing, I think it was in Washington, they had done this?
Yes, Seattle and Santa Clara are two of the leaders.
Yes. So if you could talk in more detail about how this could help solve that problem, I think that'd be cool.
Right on. Yeah, a privacy impact report is the concept. I mean, in the environmental context, before you do a big development project, you have to do an environmental impact report. Are we going to pollute the air? Are we going to pollute the water? You know, what about endangered species? And so this would be a privacy impact report. And so something has to be on the council agenda if it involves an amount above a certain limit. So the city manager can authorize expenditures below a certain amount. I think for us, it's around 110,000, something in that ballpark. And so any contract above that amount does have to be approved by council. What happens, though, is that we meet every two weeks and there might be 170 items on the agenda. And, you know, we're people with limited time. And so each council member works on the stuff that most impacts their constituencies. Oh, they're doing a big housing project in a single-family neighborhood. Oh, there's this one thing that's on the issue I care most about. And so most of the items get passed on consent, right? And I think that's what was, I think that's what city staff hoped for with both the AI homeless strategy item as well as the parks item. Oh, these are on consent, so they'll kind of just slip through, right?
When you say on consent, for people who are not familiar with city council vernacular, just their local politics, give me an idea of what that means.
Yeah, sorry for the jargon. Okay, so we don't want to meet for 100 hours, right? So we've got 170 items on the agenda, but we want to meet for five hours. And we know some of the items are going to involve serious discussion. 20 people come up to testify, right? And so what they try to do is take, you know, most of the items and adopt them all at once. So there's a consent agenda, there might be items 1 through 100, and someone makes a motion, I move to adopt the consent agenda, someone says, I second. And then if a majority approves, all those items pass at the same time. So in the future, of course, we can take something like LiveView off the consent agenda. So as a council member, I do have that power to pull something off consent. I don't need five others to agree with me. And that means that it will be a separate vote.
So that's kind of like autopilot, as it was a way to put it.
Yeah, yeah. And then so the impact report would hopefully say, okay, this is the details of their AI program. This is how the data is stored. This is what they use it for. This is who they sell it to. These are the implications, like this is how that data might be used. Basically, to develop a report, there would be on the agenda. So what happens is we have a website agenda and it'll say, item 65 or whatever, LiveView Technologies authorized $100,000 contract. And then there'd be a second document that was the privacy impact report. They would have whatever elements that we prescribe. We haven't actually adopted this policy yet, so if y'all have ideas on what the impact report should include, we can add that. And then, you know, some other official within the city would be tasked with creating this impact report. They would be publicly available.
And so how does something like that get passed at the city level? Like, how did the environmental impact report get passed and how can people support this being passed?
Yeah, the environmental impact report stuff goes to these federal laws, like the Clean Water Act, you know, that Congress passed after years of negotiation. But I think the idea here is that this fall, Austin City Council, there would be four or five of us as council members who would be the sponsor of a resolution. These resolutions are called item from council. And in this resolution, we would tell the city manager, who's in charge of all the city staff, create a policy with these parameters. And that's where we're going to take the best practices of other cities and say, we direct you within 45 days to bring us back a fully fleshed-out policy that's been vetted by the law department and incorporates stakeholder feedback that accomplishes XYZ.
And I appreciate you talking about passing things on consent because one of the big things that people were discussing was the lack of transparency when it came to pulling an item. A lot of people had signed up, they'd taken off work, et cetera, and then they couldn't speak. Can you talk about, and they immediately assumed that it was like nefarious and they simply didn't want to hear it, which, I mean, part of it might be the case, right? But part of it is also not. Can you explain why that item might have been pulled and why other items might be pulled that are not, you know, they're doing deals under the table and they don't want to hear us?
So that's even a different issue. So that wasn't on consent, it was withdrawn by staff. And so what that means is, okay, we publish our agenda on our website 13 days before a meeting. So, you know, every two weeks, you've got a meeting, the Friday, you know, basically 13 days before it gets publicly posted. So the contract was on that agenda, the draft agenda. But between the time the draft agenda was posted and the meeting occurred, city staff realized, oh, we don't have support for this. We're going to take it off the agenda entirely. Now, in that situation, city staff can do that. The city manager does have that power over the agenda. Theoretically, we could have overruled him. We could have said, you know what? Councilmember Siegel and four more council members demand this be put on the agenda? We could have put it back on the agenda. But, you know, generally speaking, and we didn't know the community was going to come to this inference that, you know, bad things were happening, that would be very confrontational, right? And so we would only reserve, I'll just speak for myself, I would only do something like that that would publicly embarrass the city manager if it was very, very important, right? And so I didn't have noticed that y'all had already agreed to this plan to come to the council meeting. If I had known that, maybe I would have pushed back, right? To say, you know what? The people have already taken the time off work, they've already planned to come. We need to have a space on the agenda for this. That could have been an option. But as it was, city staff took it off the agenda. And so we just show up at the meeting and people are here to testify and we didn't realize, you know, why until people started to try to shoehorn their testimony into another item, which was amusing, but ultimately not very productive.
Well, one of the ways that I would see this is, let's say, if the contract was not going to be considered and we're just taking this off, not because we're going to do what the, my concern is, I have two ways I could lean. Like, it's very rare that anything ever goes on a line, you're either on this side or this side. And I've noticed almost every city in the United States is going the side of the Denver one, which is even when the city council and the people don't want it, they say, screw you, we're installing it anyway. So one of the, a few of the questions that I've had with regards to how this stuff is communicated. Let's say they say, okay, by the way, we're pulling this from the agenda because we don't think we want, like, we don't even want to go forward with this at this point in time, versus we're pulling from the agenda. And like, a lot of the people had responded asking, why? You have any news? You have any of this? And most of them didn't even get a response. I'm not saying from you, but from the person who sent out the email, there was, like, none of them got a response. My neighbor was one of them and she worded up something very, I told her to save it in the draft, just don't say that. But one of the things is, if they had, like, do you think the communication there could have been different? Where they say, because if I tell people, this is going to be done by Wednesday, actually, it's not going to be done by Wednesday, but expect it to be done on Friday. And they show up on Friday and they say, well, actually, I told you expect it on Friday, I didn't say it was done. My Google reviews would look very different right now. So I know that the city doesn't have that type of, like, the customer service mindset, for lack of a better way to put it. Like, what could have changed there? Or so that if an item is not being considered on the, not because we want to do what the mayor of Denver did, but because we just don't want to install this? Like, how could that have been changed in a manner that doesn't mess with your procedures?
Yeah, I mean, I think if the city manager had more awareness that, for example, a bunch of people were coming to speak, they could have issued a public statement that was, this item has been withdrawn and will not be considered again until December.
Because like, that statement there would be the difference between two people showing up and like 100 people showing up thinking that they're getting screwed with. Because the thing is, Steve, who was my manager for 10 years, he's like one of my best friends and amazing person and have it at company. He's why I have any reputation. He taught me to essentially see problems before they become problems and he always anticipated what people were going to think like five steps later. So if I tell somebody, expect it to be done Friday, but I say, but I'll call them, he knows, even if I haven't called them, their brain is listening to expect it on Friday and they're going to show up and then if I don't have it done, they're going to be mad. And he would give them a call. And I'm just wondering, like, I hear what you're saying, which is, we just, we tabled it because we weren't going to be considering it. But I also kind of expect the city manager, his salary, to have the same or at the very least, similar customer service skills to what I expect from a person who just graduated high school that I?
No, I mean, that's good business customer service, it's good politics, what you just described in terms of anticipating how the community might respond. I mean, our city manager, you know, is a human being with, you know, benefits and drawbacks. And, you know, I don't think he anticipated, frankly. I think if I had to read into what he was doing, he had no idea, right? I mean, and he would admit, he has blind spots. I mean, there was one time, a few months ago, where the city decided to discontinue a popular swimming program. It's called Night Swim. And so, you know, we have got this very.
I love Night Swim. We should keep Night Swim at all costs possible.
So like, you know, the manager told the departments, oh, you have to cut 2% from your budget mid-year. The parks director was like, oh, we can save a little money by closing the Barton Springs pool a little earlier. And the manager was like, okay, I don't swim there, no big deal. And then council gets 1,000 emails, you must save Night Swim. All that's to say is the city manager does have blind spots. And so that's where I think, I'll just say, for my office, the District 7 office, we're getting very deep into these issues. And so, I mean, I can promise that if one of these things gets put on the agenda again and then gets taken off the agenda, I'll let y'all know.
I appreciate it. Because if, let's say, three people signed up to speak on it, it turns, goes off the agenda, I go, eh, whatever. But I know just from the BCCD emails on the first time around, it was at least 50 people. So like, if I know 50 people signed up to speak on it and then I tell them, well, you can't speak now, but expect to next time, and it's not, like, the Steve in my brain is telling me, hey, you should probably send out an email before that. You have like 50 people outside of your store. Because the store that we had in New York City, we had 12 people working there, it was 600 square feet. So you really did have to get every customer. you really did have to get every customer to feel happy and secure and then leave within thirty to ninety seconds or you did, like, you, everybody would just be waiting on the street. But I, I hear where you're coming, I hear where you're coming from.
And by contrast, you know, when we had several dozen people show up to a work session, so this wasn't even an official council meeting. But when we killed ALPRs, we killed it before the official meeting. Uh, dozens of people showed up, were very persuasive, and then the city manager announced the next day and he told the media, uh, we won't be voting on ALPRs on Thursday. And that effectively ended the program. And so I think it's just a question of awareness for city staff.
So one question I have is when you were talking about the, uh, Austin not having the ALPRs and the flock cameras. The, the question that I would have is, they, they're still technically physically present. They're, they're solar powered, they use LTE. It's not like somebody's going to unplug them. So what stops those cameras from continuing listly recording and collecting data that can be used otherwise? Is, is this a situation where those cameras actually functionally do not work? Or is it a case of those work, it's just you and people in the city do not have a login and a password to it anymore? And how does that work?
No, that's a great question. I was thinking of that about ten minutes ago and I realized I don't have the answer. So that'd be something, um, uh, that we can look into.
I respect the fact that you did that. I'm just like, I thank you for, for like actually saying. People are gonna respect, people are gonna respect that.
Yeah, I mean, but I, I'm, I'm curious of that as well. Like, are they, are they dead? I mean, I don't know the locations. Like, they don't tell council where these cameras are. But I, I'd like to get the answer to that question.
Because I know that in, I forget where in Illinois, they put, were putting garbage bags over the cameras so that they couldn't see anything.
Evanston.
Evanston.
Yeah, Flock, they had voted to get rid of their contract. They removed the cameras and then Flock, without the city's permission, came and reinstalled the cameras. And Ev- the City of Evanston had to put black plastic trash bags over them because Flock could not tell them why these cameras were back up.
Yeah, shady.
And if that doesn't say where they really make their money, I don't, I don't know what does.
Right. I mean, cities don't even need to pay for these things. They're still profitable.
Right, exactly.
On, on the payment thing, just since I, I did not look into a lot of the city politics for the same reason that when I walk into a room in my house and the lights are flickering, like, I don't look in the electrical outlet cuz it's, oh, the voltage is low. Oh, it's cuz water got into this little cap over here. Oh, that's cuz my mortar is bad. And I'll just wind up looking into all these things that I don't wanna see. So she was the one who first kind of baited me into looking at the cameras and she goes, yeah, they wanna spend two million during a budgetary crisis. I'm like, why? Is there a budgetary crisis? And she looks at the logo and I'm like, oh, it changed. And then I Google like, what did the logo cost? And then I see Prop Q where they're, what they wanted to raise taxes for about approximately, I think, thirty to fifty million dollar budget shortfall or something like that, that they were looking to fill in. So like, where, did it sends, do you think it sends like a mixed message when they say we would wanna spend two million dollars on so AI surveillance in the parks, but also we're out of money for these things? We need to raise property taxes and sales tax at the same time?
It's tough. It's, I mean, uh, me being in this seat of like, you know, the city government's not perfect. Across all the city's departments and programs and utilities, we have a six billion dollar annual budget, you know? Uh, seventeen thousand some workers. And so there's a lot of stuff I don't love. Um, I, I do support the tax increase because it's gonna keep people off the streets, it's gonna keep the parks open, it's gonna have nine-one-one respond to you more quickly. Uh, but that said, yeah, when, when this, uh, ugly, if I can say that, logo, um, is published, I mean, you know, I didn't have a chance to redesign the logo. They didn't give me that option, right? Uh, they just showed it to me before they, they published it.
Would you have charged a million dollars to do it?
Well, you know, it's interesting. On that note, it, it sounds like you have some experience in business. You know, if you're building a brand for a six billion dollar organization, spending a million dollars once every ten years is not that much money. But most people don't understand that. And, you know, of the million, four hundred thousand was for design, then there was other expenses. I, the price to me is not the biggest offense. It's that it's not consistent with Austin's aesthetic and sense of who we are as a community. I think if the logo was beautiful and people loved it, they wouldn't care about what it cost. But, you know, this, this, you know, public scandal about the logo, this issue of city staff, you know, using public dollars to pay for their lunches. There's been a number of like little things that kind of feed this sense of distrust in the government. And that's fundamentally something that I think across the political spectrum, people feel distrust with government. And that's really hard for me cuz I wanna, I wanna strengthen government. I wanna have a stronger safety net. I want better schools, better healthcare. But I can't get there if people don't trust government.
The logo was my gateway drug to wanting to vote no on Prop Q because I didn't, I love, when I looked into it, I didn't realize that we, like, how much does San Diego spend per capita? How much does Houston? How much does San Antonio? I didn't even realize that we spend almost twice as much per capita for that. And then when I saw the two million dollar AI surveillance counter contract, and then I also saw the one million to be spent on, on a logo, I just thought, no, I, I don't, I don't trust you with my money. I was, I was an under, that, that was the thing that will actually put, wind up pushing me over the edge on it. Cause I could understand the concept with employee lunches. When my business, when my business is doing well, I would pay for employee lunches just fine. And like, I don't really, there's no big deal with that, where, if just paying for people to eat. And it's hard. If, if there's a scandal over city employees having lunch at the cafeteria paid for, I mean, that's the hall monitor kind of person I think is gonna complain about that. But the, the logo thing is, you know, there, there are people that'll make something for, like, my, my business logo is like six thousand bucks. Like, the, the most expensive one that I've ever paid for in my life.
True, but I, to be fair, I don't think it's worth six billion dollars, the business. Austin is worth six billion, right? Is what you said?
Yeah, and so this is a redesign across every department. We've got an electric utility. So of our six billion dollar budget, almost two billion is the electric utility. Anyway, there's a lot to it. But I'm not here to defend the logo. Uh, I get it. I get why people are distrustful, you know? Um, we're, we're asking you to give four hundred dollars more a year and then we're not using our money wisely. I understand that critique.
How do you manage? Because I, I realize it must be a very difficult task to understand the inner workings of city council, to understand everything about Austin politics, the inside baseball of it all, and to really want to do good, but to sort of have to work with the system that's been provided to you at the same time. How do you effectively communicate that to people? That, of course, this is not the way I would want to do things, but working with the system is the most effective way that you found to effectuate a certain kind of change?
It's like, how do you sell government, right?
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it's like, it's the best system we have for doing the most we can for the most people, right? Like, that's kind of the, the fundamental idea of government, to raise everyone's standard of living, to have roads, to have pools and parks, to have nine-one-one, you know, emergency response. Um, but it's flawed inherently. And so, I mean, for me, I folk, try to focus on how this benefits you in a material way, right? So if I'm knocking doors this weekend, ask you to vote for Prop Q, and it sounds like, Lewis, you might be a lost cause, so I'm not sure if I'll knock on your door. But, uh, you know, and I'm speaking to someone in a kind of upper-middle-class home, well, really, it's gonna be about, let's keep the pools open all summer, right? Let's make sure that the grass is, is mowed at the park. And, you know, maybe you don't think, think of yourself as wanting to fund a, a solution to homelessness, but we can all recognize that having more people living on the streets contributes to disorder, uh, and, and kind of brings down the quality of life. And so I think we all do have a vested interest in government succeeding. I think the idea of giving up on government, you know, I don't know if you would call that an anarchist point of view or, or what, but I, I think that leads to a lot of unpredictable results, right? Because even thinking about privacy policies, I mean, our best hope to rein in the flocks of the world would be a strong federal policy that holds them accountable. So to have a strong federal policy, we need a strong government that can enforce it.
Have you thought about putting the people that are working on those particular policies, let's say, on camera more often or having them speak? Because in New York City, there was a one, non, there was a one proposal that was made that was, but more progressive than I would usually be supportive of, but I, I thought it was a great proposal. It was a voucher program for the homeless. And there are people thinking, I mean, you know, one thousand or twelve hundred per, that's a lot of money. Yet, when you, you looked at the one nonprofit that the city was dealing with for most of their homelessness, it was costing forty-five hundred dollars to five thousand dollars per month, per homeless person, sometimes nine hundred dollars per night for emergency response. The money from that nonprofit went to reelect Andrew Cuomo. The director of the, executive director of the nonprofit was making over five hundred thousand dollars a year in twenty thirteen money. So it's like, I understand if you don't think this is the best idea, but almost anything is better than what you have here. And if you had them, uh, like, and when they started speaking about it more publicly and talking about it and you got to put names to the face, uh, faces to the names and the ideas, it started to create more of this public trust that got me to think, oh, yeah, you're, fine, yeah, I'll, I'll vote a yes on this. You deserve it.
No, it's absolutely important. I mean, and it can't just be at city council meetings, right? Cause only a, a very tiny subset of people are gonna come downtown, uh, Thursday midday to speak to this legislative body. And so I do think government needs to be more sophisticated about communications in general.
Yeah, cuz like, my no versus yes on that is, okay, how, when I see like the AI surveillance thing, the million-dollar logo and all that, I, my assumption jumps to, this is more like the forty-five hundred dollars, uh, a month for a horrible place that, and the money going to the executive director and reelecting Andrew Cuomo. It activates that cynicism that I think would be turned down if you actually got to meet with those people, talk with them, see their work on a regular basis. And I know you're all busy, you have a lot of things to do outside of figuring out how to get those people to be more approachable or more humanized on camera. But I find that we, like, in my industry, at least as a technician, people always used to see the unauthorized person as a shade tree mechanic. The person that's gonna mess up your stuff, install something that is cheaper so that he can make more money. But when I just started showing, here, I'm gonna show all my mistakes on camera, here, you can watch everything I'm doing. People were really supportive and it was surprising, even when they'd say, I know how to do this and the person next door is half the price, but I'm sending it to you anyway. And I would love to see that level of, uh, like, I would love to facilitate that type of trust in my local government and, or relationship with my local government rather than a hundred people showing up with a paperclip on a, on a post-it.
No, same. I mean, it's kind of a, a radical transparency, right? And, and, you know, I'm trying to live up to it myself. I mean, I've started doing one-on-ones on, on weekends where you can get a fifteen-minute coffee date with me and bring any question or problem you have and, you know, and, and making myself available to that or showing up.
Respect. Most people don't do that.
My staff made me do it. I, I would rather sleep in and hang out with my kids.
That's not on camera.
It's a whole team, it's a whole team effort here, trust me, to make all of this happen.
But, uh, yeah, I mean, and it's hard, right? Um, and you don't always.
That would convert me on a lot of, of things that I would probably say no to, is actually having an idea.
Yeah.
Oh, this brings me to, oh, a question that was actually asked by my old boss, which I think is, what is a solution to eliminate corruption in local government? That's probably an unfair question to ask of you.
Large question.
Well, I, I told me to get one question.
I mean, I hate, you know, this jargon of campaign finance reform, but I mean, really, the idea that, um, you know, campaign contributions help determine who can win elections. I mean, that really is the straightest path, right? Um, cuz even me and, you know, uh, your, your viewers might know I'm more of a, on the socialist end of the, of the political spectrum. Um, you know, and I ran a very much grassroots campaign where we knocked on thousands of doors. I mean, I personally knocked on thousands of doors to win my race, but I also had to raise a couple hundred thousand dollars. And who gives money to a city council race in Austin, Texas? I mean, I got my mom and dad and their friends to give a little money and some people that just loved me unconditionally, they gave some money. But then I had to call people.
I know there's a certain number of signatures, at least in New York, if you're running for governor, Larry Sharp talks about this with me when we meet. He was, you would need a certain number of signatures. And to get that number of signatures, you either need to be Superman with a time machine or you need to pay people. It's impossible to not pay people. You cannot get the number, like hundreds of thousands of signatures walking and knocking on a door. If you just do the math in your head how much time that would take, you need a team of people. So what, what was that like for you, actually trying to raise the money necessary? What was it like for you looking at the requirements for what it takes to run?
I mean, it's daunting, right? That I have to call people I don't know, some of whom have like specific interests from the city. Like, one reason so-and-so gives to city council races is because they might have a contract on the council agenda, you know? Uh, or alternatively, uh, if I'm not gonna call that person, who's, who's like a, a special interest, right? I have to find thirty people to give a smaller amount that adds up to that, what that one person can give, right? And so it's all this, this thing about time. And so I think this, one solution is public financing of elections. I think New York does that. You know, they kind of, the city matches, uh, by a five or six X, you know, how much, you know, private people give and that kind of levels the playing field.
What is it that actually costs money? Sorry for interrupting you.
Sure, no.
What are the things that, like, I know with Larry Sharp, when he was talking about running for governor, what cost him money there is he had to go door-to-door and get signatures from people. And he had to have a number of signatures that's impossible for a human being to do on their own. So what are the things that require you spend money to actually become a council person here?
The most persuasive tactic in politics is one-to-one conversations. So if I show up at your doorstep and you're pessimistic about the city because of this AI contract, but you get to talk to me for five minutes and, you know, face-to-face, and I am authentic and sincere and you think I'm smart, that's gonna be the most persuasive thing I can do. And if I can hire someone like Jess, my staff member here, or five other skilled communicators to knock doors with me, that's the most persuasive way I can win votes at the local level. And so then you gotta pay people, these are skilled people, you gotta pay them twenty-five an hour, what have you, to do that with you. And so that costs money. Um, the less grassroots candidates, they pay for TV ads, mail pieces, I mean, digital ads, things of that nature. Those tactics are less time-intensive. They're also less effective. But you can kind of carpet bomb, right? Uh, so you can send ten thousand people a piece of mail or you can target a digital ad so that there'll be a million views or what have you. And so, I mean, depending on your skill level and also depending on the popularity of your message, you choose these different tactics. And so if you're maybe the, I guess we're alluding to the Denver mayor being a little bit corrupt, maybe that person is not gonna have a grassroots campaign where they talk to voters because they know that voters are gonna maybe be upset with them, right? But maybe they have an outside business group that'll spend two hundred fifty thousand dollars putting up ads everywhere. And so there's different paths to do it, but I think the more grassroots path you are swimming upstream, right? It's a little bit harder.
Yeah, Henry Chambers was talking about that. He was a Senate, State Senator in Nebraska. He was minor troll doing a right to repair thing. But what I have respect for is when you look to followthemoney.org, he takes money from nobody. It's just dollars from his neighbors and he knocks on every door himself. And I, I respected that a lot. So, uh, I was no on Prop Q, but if you're open to arranging meetings with the people who are actually providing those types of services, I'd be happy to tell their stories, help humanize them. And I'm open to change my mind.
That'd be great. Would love to.
I think, as I think that that kind of communication with people, that most people don't have the time to show up at ten AM on a Thursday to figure out what their local government is doing. And seeing the way the homeless program was run in New York City versus seeing how it could be run made me sick when I lived there, when I saw the amount of sheer waste. Cause my store was next to one, uh, but before I moved into a store, when I, my office was right next to one of those places. And half of the time, it didn't even have air conditioning. So I would wind up like offering them, here, I'll give you a hundred bucks if you wanna help me pack some boxes and get lunch because I had air conditioning, they didn't. And they all, it's, I, I would like to see what that's like here and meet the people. And I think that could be interesting.
Yeah, I mean, like, for example, we could have a worker at EMS, you know, emergency medical services, if you wanna kind of learn how the increased revenue would help them get to people faster to solve health crises or, yeah, I'd be happy to arrange.
Or how that does. Cause I think ninety-nine percent of normal people either think that they're not aware of it or they're aware of it and they, they just assume that it's uh, corrupt, incompetent, useless, or I just go away. And like, when we actually put a face to it and they can, if they're able to tell a convincing story and if they're able to show you what it's like to do their job and show you what their day is like, I think that changes things a lot and would potentially fix skepticism.
Right on. Happy to try that. Yeah.
Thank you for taking the time. And thank you for providing honest answers to every single question. And I think people are gonna appreciate the, whether they agree with you or not, the brand of authenticity that you bring to this stuff. And thank you for being the only person on the city council to also, uh, reach out to me and tell me where you stand on the cameras. I respect it a lot.
Awesome. Well, thanks so much for the opportunity. Appreciate it, Lewis.
Thank you.
Great to see you.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks.